Okay, good morning. We're here for the Marion County Board of Commissioners Weekly Board Session. It's Wednesday, April 17th, 2019. We're in the Senator Hearing Room and as always, if you will join us, we'll start our Board meeting with a Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, gosh, I love doing that every Wednesday and probably a couple other times seems like during the week we get to say it somewhere. We have nobody signed up for public comment. We have a couple presentations today. First presentation is from, I believe, from our Public Works Department on Asphalt, or to our Public Works Department on Asphalt Pavement Association of Oregon Awards to Public Works Engineering Staff. And Brian is here with Dave and I believe Brandon. Yeah, if you want to come up and give your presentation? Welcome, gentlemen.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Dave Chamnus. I'm a project engineer with Public Works Department.
I'm Brandon Stowes.
I'm an engineering tech project inspector with Public Works.
And we're here today to share with you the award that we received from the Asphalt Pavement Association of Oregon. It's a kind of a trade organization that helps promote their industry, which is the pavement of asphalt roads, driveways, airports, that type of thing. They also do a training and educational seminars, industry updates and things like that. And each year at their annual conference down in Eugene, they have a banquet dinner, which they announce the awards for the previous year. And this year in February, they had the awards for the 2008 pavings. They're paving in excellence awards. They've got six, seven, seven different categories. And we were chosen, selected for a rural road category. And the criteria that they use for selecting the roads is they're looking for a uniform texture. Now, if you've ever driven down a road and there's some kind of rough spots and stuff like that, that's really not acceptable. It has to be across the full mat, a uniform texture, that you don't see any kind of individual aggregate. You'll also notice that with these types of roads, they ride real smooth and they're quiet. They're looking at how they construct the joints and how they match the project into other features or other parts at the ends of the road. Ride, of course, is a big factor. You don't want to have a bouncy ride. It's got to be smooth, the overall appearance, and then also the degree of difficulty. And we'll get more into that with our particular project. So specifically to the rural road category, it's got to have two more lanes. It's a non-highway. It needs to have shoulders, although it can have some curb and gutter, but it has to be a small amount. And it's either a brand-new road or it's an overlay. And ours is kind of a combination of that, which I'll mention in a moment. So Marion County did receive an award. It was a first-place award. And our road that won was Old Mahema Road. This is, it goes from Highway 22 near Stateon and then heads east and then connects back into Highway 22. This road is a pretty important road, not only for the local residents, but on occasion, when there's a kind of tie-up or anything on Highway 22, it is an alternate route that they can keep traffic moving. The overall cost of this project was about $1.1 million, and it was just under five miles. Brian Nicholas, our Director of Public Works, was a project manager. He was working in the Capital Projects Section at the time. And I was the project engineer. Brandon was the inspector for the project. The contractor was North Saniam Paving, and they are out of the Stateon area. The supplier was Riverbend Materials, and they provided the asphalt. So here's a before and after picture. You can see the road on the left. It looks a little narrow compared to the road on the right, and that's because it is. That road was 19 feet wide before we started, and we added enough asphalt along the shoulders to bring it up to 22 feet, which is our standard rural road. That also allows us to put edge lines on it. If we put edge lines on a road that's only 19 feet wide, they tend to wear off and they're less effective. So that's what our standard is for our department. So here you can see where we did the widening, the picture on the left. We added about one to one and a half feet on either side. And then the picture on the lower right, it shows one panel is down, and they lay down a one-inch leveling and then a two-inch or an inch-and-a-half overlay. Now, you notice in the lower right-hand corner, it's kind of hard to see, but there's quite a bit of distresses in that pavement, which is why we paved it. On a scale of one to 100, we have a pavement condition index, which this rated about a 36 or so. So it was definitely in need of an overlay. And here's another shot here with a before and after showing both panels down. And then in closing, I wanted to say that really this award is for the paving company. They're the ones that go out there. They have the equipment, the labor and the materials to put the job down. But it is a partnership. Marion County has a good working relationship with our contractors. And we do the design, and we work with the contractor to implement that design. And I think that combination of our good design, we got excellent materials, their equipment and their labor, and they're skilled at doing what they do, we end up with a quality project. So that's the end of our presentation. There's our plaque, which I brought with me today. So we'll post this in our department. And thank you very much for listening.
Dave, thank you. And we're going to want to get a picture. Jolene's going to want to get a picture with the three of you. And is anybody here from North Saniam Paving? I just want to compliment them and the work that they do throughout our region. And just even recently, they're doing the Tumble Creek Bridge up on Highway 22. And two weeks ago was a disaster. It was an hour to get through that area. And I just got an email from somebody this week that they just got right on top of that and this weekend when they were coming back, because they had a place up in, I guess in Bend someplace. They said they had it just zoomed right through. So they really responded to the issue. And I think the Commissioner and I drove this road that we're talking about. Was that about three years ago with that one? When we were doing a tour of some of our roads and projects? And it was a mess. And I just drove it recently, and it's just beautiful. So great job there. Sam, did you have a comment?
I was going to mention just that. We'd gotten residents' complaints there and went and took a look with the former Director, Alan Haley, and we all agreed, and I'm happy to see it moved on the list. I have one little comment. So you're going to take that plaque back with you. I think it belongs in the Board's office. And you're going to say, "Why?" I'll tell you why.
I think that can be arranged.
We get blamed for everything that goes wrong. If something goes good, we get anything? It's up to you.
Hey. That's why we got hired for the job, Commissioner. It's like we can handle it.
No, I'm just grateful for your work, and I also want to commend North Saniam Paving for their work.
Thank you.
I'm glad that we have such good businesses.
Right, yeah, local business, yeah. So, Jolene, did you want us to come down there? We'll take a real photo. All right.
Congratulations. Good job. I'm surprised they didn't, River Road, that project that you guys did so fast with KD, would that be a potential?
It could be. I think that's a category you could have. Usually it's a hundred.
After presentations. Okay. We're going to have, our next presentation is Marion Polk Food Share kickoff. And Lisa, and I know Rick is not here, so we have another guest with us, probably from Food Share. Can you introduce her?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning. For the record, Lisa Miller, Volunteer Services Coordinator. Rick was unable to be here this morning. So this morning, we have Josh Gwynn. He is the food resource developer from Marion Polk Food Share. And we are here this morning to kick off our annual employee food drive, which started on Monday. It's going to run April 15th through 26th, and all of our county departments are participating. We have reps stationed in all of our departments who are helping coordinate some fun activities, including a breakfast that we had yesterday to raise some funds for the food drive. And so Josh here is going to give you a little information about Marion Polk Food Share and a little bit about this food drive.
Welcome, Josh.
Thank you. As many of you may know, Marion Polk Food Share is the regional food bank serving the communities of Marion and Polk Counties. Marion Polk Food Share believes first and foremost that everyone deserves access to nutritious foods. We believe that here soon, we can have vibrant, healthy communities that are hunger-free. And only because of you and only because of the neighbors that we're serving together that believe in our cause are we going to get there. So every single day, neighbors in our community wake up, and in Oregon, one out of every eight of those neighbors are food insecure. One out of every five of our children are food insecure. And so when you think about what that looks like on an everyday basis, when we go shopping in our community grocery stores, like our local ones like Roth's, we're forced with some unfortunate decisions. Where oftentimes rent is maybe a little expensive, we have unfortunate decisions to make, medical bills are rather high, and there's things that are really difficult for us to decide about. One of the decisions that we can make is at that grocery store, we can fill our grocery basket half-full. So at Marion Polk Food Share, we try to make that decision a little bit easier, and we try to provide enough fresh and nutritious food for those neighbors. And so in a grocery store, one out of every eight of the folks who we're shopping with are forced to make that unfortunate decision. And at a school, one out of every five of the kids who are walking up to answer a question that their teacher asks of them don't have enough food in their bellies to be able to answer that question really well. And so we're sending tons and tons of fresh produce to schools and to food pantries across the counties that we serve to be able to make those answers a lot easier to these kids. So 46,000 neighbors and 15,000 children every single month are receiving foods from Marion Polk Food Share and from the 127 food distribution sites, partners, that are in just about every single city that are in Marion Polk Food Share service areas in Marion and Polk Counties. That is made possible because during these next few weeks, we've partnered with Marion County employees for the Marion County Employees Food Drive. We're really excited about this one because with this food drive, this is just an immensely exciting opportunity to gain access to employees throughout this entire county, where oftentimes people are touching many different access points with the neighbors that we're serving together. So thank you so much. I want to afford you guys some opportunity to ask us some questions.
I just want to say thank you for your work.
Yeah, Josh, thank you. I was at the, I think it was April 4th, I was at the Sustainer Appreciation Lunch and had a presentation that was from Rick about what you're doing. So well-informed and appreciate all the things that you do in our community to help the citizens, not only in Marion County, but the surrounding county as well. So thank you. Yeah.
So.
Lisa?
Last year, our county employees brought in over 1,200 pounds of food and raised over $2,500. So this year, we hope to at least meet and exceed those goals.
Great.
Let's do it.
Okay.
Thank you. We're going to do it.
Yeah.
Appreciate being here today.
Thank you.
Okay, that ends our presentations, and we'll go really quickly through our consent calendar. And Commissioner, I believe it's your turn.
I will. I want to take just a moment outside of the schedule. I don't know when they're going to leave, but I've been reminded that Dave Chamnus is retiring in less than two months. And I'd just like to say on the record, I appreciate the work he's done and always been comforted that he was there doing it. And I think this will be a loss to the county. And I'm almost, how many years, it's more than 30, Dave. I just, how many?
It's actually 41.
Ah. Yeah. So things will be changing.
Congratulations on your service. And I remember working, Dave, I don't know if you remember this, but Twin Fur Project.
In your living room, I remember that meeting.
Yeah. You came out, and I think that was the last LID project that we did in Marion County. I've been told that many times, where all the neighbors figured out how to get a road paved and bring it into the road system.
That's right.
And I lived there for 20 years. I just moved, sold that place last year, but it's so nice having that road. And thank you for all your help on that particular project and many others that you've done, including what we've done. So thank you.
So Chair Cameron, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar this morning. Under Board of Commissioners, we have an LCC application with recommended approval for Half Court Sports Bar and Tap Room LLC in Salem. Approve an incoming funds joint lease agreement with Salem Saturday Market and Salem Area Master Transit District for $1,000 to utilize the North Block unit of Cordell Square for the Wednesday Market, which will begin May through September. Business Services, approve an order adopting the revised Marion County Benefit Plan Rules. Public Works, approve an incoming funds contract with Gov. Deals Incorporated for $300,000 for the sale of surplus vehicles through an online auction. Tax Office, approve an order for cancellation of uncollectible personal property tax accounts in the amount of $62,357.
I second the motion.
Yeah, motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay, that's done. And we're going to move on to our action items today on our community services. First one is consider a resolution approving a rural industrial improvement property tax exemption for DK Fab. And Tom, I think you're going to lead this one off.
I am.
Chair Cameron, if I could interrupt, I'm going to not be involved in this discussion. I have close family relationships and ownership with DK Fab, certainly. I better just leave it there.
We understand you have relationships throughout the whole county, Commissioner.
So good morning, Commissioners.
Appreciate it.
For the record, I'm Tom Hoag with Community Services, the Marion County Economic Development Coordinator. This morning, we're going to consider a couple of applications for the rural industrial property tax exemption. And before we get to those particulars, I thought I would step back a little bit, tell a little bit of the background and put that decision in context. So Marion County is the first to implement this program, and if approved today, these two will be the first rural tax exemptions to be granted under this program that the legislature created in 2016 anywhere in the state. And so Marion County was involved in that legislation in 2016, spoke in favor of that, and then worked in 2018 legislative session to make some text corrections. And as you know, we're having some discussions on what more to do to create those things, those text improvements. And then last summer, Marion County passed its implementing ordinance, which became effective in October. And these two are the first applications to come forward. This is a unique program. So cities have enterprise zones, and there's quite a few of them across the state, but there's very few directed tax exemptions for rural areas. And here we are in Marion County, where ag is our number-one industry, and yet it's very difficult to do the kinds of exemptions and incentives that cities take for granted and do it as part of their business every day. So I think we should both be proud and happy that we've implemented this program. And I think it's worthwhile just to remember that that industry is important, and we have to find ways to support it. So I'd be happy to answer any questions on that program, if you have any. Otherwise, I'll go on to the particulars.
I think you can keep going unless we have questions right now.
Very good. All right. So first up is DK Fab. They've applied for a tax exemption for about $4 million of industrial equipment. They intend to purchase and install at their location east of Woodburn. That application was made to the assessor, who has reviewed it and found it valid, and now has come forward to you for resolution of support. If your resolution is granted, it becomes the applicant's responsibility to go gather other resolutions of support from other taxing districts to achieve the necessary threshold of 75% of the taxing value entities in order to implement that 100% tax exemption for the new value on the site. Now, that's a big mouthful, so I'll pause. If that wasn't clear, I'll unwrap that a little bit. But basically, if they get approval on this new value, then their tax, the new property tax would be exempted for a period of three taxing years. And that really helps them, both in terms of cash flow, but also, you know, when you make a new investment, new revenue doesn't immediately follow. And this helps them, I think, match in time investments and revenue. And it shows the county's support of these kinds of businesses and this kind of activity in the county. So without other questions, then staff recommends approval of the DK Fab. DK Fab was intending to be here today. I think business and life may have gotten them, but...
Totally understand as a businessperson.
Yep.
Paying attention to business first. So we want to do this one. Any questions for Tom about this particular one? I think in our notes here, it shows that if, I think, $43,000 a year is a substantial number that we can help businesses. And I guess the only comment I will make is this whole concept came out of a meeting that I had with Jim Bruno while I'm at Valley Vineyards, after they made about a $5 or $6 million investment out there and said, "Hey, it's going to take us a while to raise the revenue and get things going." And boom, we get hit with a property tax bill right away. So it's great to be able to be here today and approving these first ones. And it'll be, for me, Tom, it'll be really interesting. I want to make sure, and Nick, I see Nick sitting out here, that we follow these through to see what kind of process they actually, roadblocks they run into, et cetera, and how we can help with those other taxing districts.
Sure. Well, I just want to thank you both for your work on this. I think this is a really important program, and I know it's been years.
Oh, my gosh.
You've spent years working on this. You have the scars to prove it, so...
I'm feeling really good about this right now, but this is only part of it. We'll see how the whole process takes place.
And I just, and I said this in our meeting the other day, increasingly, it's important for us to have high-tech capabilities in our ag businesses. My wife's family's in the dairy business, and they just bought a robot that milks their cows, and it's very, very expensive. But we're in a globally competitive market for ag now, and if we don't make these capital investments, our ag industry's going to suffer. So I'm very supportive of this, and I think this is a really good program.
Okay. It's your turn now.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the rural industrial improvement property tax exemption for DK Fab Incorporated. It's on you. Sam, stand out.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion, Commissioner?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
If I may, I just would like to point out the resolution before you. In the second paragraph, it says that the Oregon laws 2016 authorized the counties to adopt an ordinance. The actual language in the statute says an ordinance or resolution, and this is being adopted pursuant to a resolution today.
Do you want to clarify what you just said? I see what you're reading. To adopt an ordinance providing for property tax exemption.
Right.
But we're doing it via a resolution?
Right. And I just want to clarify that the statute allows us to do it by resolution.
Okay, for the record. Okay.
Okay. But the motion was for a resolution, right?
Thanks, Jane.
Yes.
Right. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay.
And for the record, Commissioner abstains.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioners. Commissioner Wells, I want to follow up on your comment about making these kinds of investments. Ag industry is changing rapidly, and the kind of investments that are going to be needed to keep up with that are going to be significantly expensive and involve a lot of technology. And I think that as we go forward and we see the results of this kind of exemption, it'll give us one way to have our finger on the pulse of what's happening. And before I do the next one, I want to give a shout-out to the Assessor's Office, who has been a great partner as we've implemented this, and also with Sedcor, Nick Carville, who's been helping us to get the word out and find these applicants. So thanks to both of those entities. So the next one is for Hopmire Cold LLC, and the applicant is in the audience today. They are proposing to build a $2,600,000 new building for their processing of hops. And if approved and fully realized at that value, there would be about $31,000 per year exemption for three tax years that would come to them.
Very good.
Are you okay with this one?
Yes, as far as I know.
You're not related to...
We tried to get that in the elevator. We couldn't find a relation.
No relationships to people who grow hops for a good beer? Huh? All right.
He does drink beer, though.
So, and just for the record, this one, would you say 2.6 approximately in new investment? And could be upwards of $31,000 for three consecutive years to help this particular organization get going and make these investments.
Okay. If I could, then Chair Cameron, I'd make a motion that we do approve a resolution regarding the rural industrial improvement property tax exemptions for Hopmire Cold LLC.
I second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Just again, Tom, we just want to, and Nick, we want to make sure we follow through on how this process goes, because this is just the first step for them. All right. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay. That's done.
Thank you, Commissioners.
And John's over here because we potentially just, $222,000 over three years. Well, you'll be gone.
He doesn't care anymore.
Well, maybe, in two years from now or three years from now? Yeah. All right.
We'll get the investments, though.
All right. Next up is, huh? Yeah, Dave. Dave and you. Next, action item is under Public Works, consider approval of a public improvement agreement with Roy Hawk Construction LLC for $3.4579, $729.65 for asphalt create concrete resurfacing of various Marion County roads. I really stumbled over that. Can you jingle your pockets on the 65 cents? Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Brian Vincent, county engineer with Public Works. Joining me is Ryan Crowther, Capital Projects Manager. And we have in the audience Dave Chamnus. He was the project engineer for this project as well. As you mentioned, this is the discussion on a potential award for this year's resurfacing projects throughout Marion County. It's comprised of two phases, if you will. The first phase will complement, be complemented by some overlay work later in the summer. It needs to be completed by June 30th, and then the follow-on phase is subsequent to that. In total, there are 22 separate distinct project areas that will be completed. The bids were reviewed for anomalies. We found none. Prices were reviewed and were consistent with historical practice prices and inconsistent with the engineer's estimate. We've had favorable results with this firm in previous histories. And so as such, we noted... And so as such, we notified the other, the community that, of the intent to award and allowed a protest period. No protests were filed, so we are prepared to execute the contract with your, your approval. I think that's the gist of the intent or discussion. I, I do have, we do have some data to share with you if you were interested in that level of detail or some graphics. We're not able to upload those in time for the audience to see, but we do have some handouts if you're interested. I think with that, we'll just open it to you for any questions you might have.
Questions?
Well, this isn't really a question, and certainly the prices are substantially better when you look at, at the Hawk Construction bid. But I did hear in previous testimony that the materials from Riverbend were exceptional, at least in one project. More than price, does, does, what's the right word? Quality, that's easy, come into play here at all?
The, the quality is really centered around adherence to the project specifications. So in general, most of these firms are able to provide an, a, an excellent mix from the, the plants in the area. So it really boils down to, as Dave pointed out, the level of workmanship. And that's where this firm has shown that they do exhibit that level of workmanship. We fully anticipate a very excellent product this year as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, John.
It might be a good idea for you to tell the listening audience where you're going to put all this money out in the county.
Be happy to do so. Thank you. The first grouping is in the North Salem area, and that's a very minor, so we, what, Dave mentioned some, a criterion that's used to establish which areas get repaired. And so the pavement condition index is a, a great indicator of where work needs to be done. So in the first area, several of those locations were identified, and there's some actual removal of that poor asphalt and then re-inlay with new product, and then in turn, another, another overlay on top of that. So various areas just in the North Salem area. I can, in addition to that, there's Powers Creek Loop in, near Highway 214, Powers Creek Loop Northeast, north of Bridge Creek Road, Bridge Creek Road, Powers Creek Loop. I'm not sure what the differentiation there is, but Fox Road Northeast from Victor Point Road to Drift Creek Road, Drift Creek Road to Highway 214, or from Highway 214 to Fraser Road, south of Tangent Point. That's a total of nine miles worth of that preparatory work. And then to be followed on, I can't remember, Dave, is it slurry, chip seal? Okay. That, that's driving the June 30th completion date, and then our, our operations crew in turn comes in and applies a chip seal in addition to that. So the other areas are in various locations. Most of those were out in the Silverton Hills area, I believe is the, yes. Okay. So Phase Two followed on after June 30th, and it'd be completed before September. Several of these, Wheatland Road Northeast from Kaiser City Limits up to Brook Lake Road. It's an inch and, these are mostly inch and a half or two-inch overlays, so no subsequent work following on top of that. Second location is Quinney Road Northeast, 85 feet east of River Road County Line. Is that correct? I'm looking at Dave. Dave developed these.
Is it getting close to Clackamas?
No, you're not.
Okay. Just, just want to make sure we didn't go across the line there.
Another location is Radiant, 35th Avenue Northeast. It's 50 feet south of Bridge, number, well, we don't know where this bridge is, to Delaney Road Southeast, Sunnyside Road, another section on Delaney Road Southeast. I'm probably going to butcher this, Hennies, Whipper Road to 55th Avenue Southeast, Parish Gap, it's Cloverdale Drive up to Hennies Road. You'll notice a trend here, and the idea is to co-locate most of these segments, and that's just an efficiency argument more for the paving operations, so they don't have to mobilize and demobilize a number of times. So that, I think what that indicates is that, you know, kind of a, an efficient and effective operation for the contractor to bid upon, and realizing that results in a better pricing model. Let's see, we have Cloverdale Road from Enchanted Way up to Parish Gap Road, on Stateon Road, west of Brick Road to, well, 118 feet east of West Stateon Road, Ankeny Hill Road from I-5 to 99 East, Jefferson Marion Road Southeast from west of Parish Gap Road to 680 feet west of Pitzer Road. Pitzer Road from Jefferson and Marion Road to the end of the pavement. The next element is a area-wide contribution. It's the installation of reflective pavement markers. So after the pavement has been done, all these various locations will receive, you know, the, the markers indicating lane, lane widths or in both center line and fog line. The last two elements are Hazel Green Road Turn Lane. It's west of Howell Prairie Road to Howell Prairie Road. And then lastly, Hazel Green Road Bridge paving, and it's 150 feet west of the bridge to 150 feet east of the bridge. That, that project in itself is another 17 miles, so in total, it's 26 miles of resurfacing for this year's projects.
And John, I'm not sure, were you there when we had the Roads and Bridges presentation last week? Okay. So we got a full deal on this. And a couple of things I would mention, too, is that for those that are listening, is that on April 30th, we'll have our East Salem Board Session at 6 o'clock in the Town Hall. And I know Public Works will be there to present kind of what's happening over in that area. And then on May 22nd, we'll be up in North County in St. Paul, and Public Works will be there as part of that presentation to talk about things that are happening up there, too. So some of the other areas out south, we're not actually having a presentation.
Mr. Chair, I think it's important for our viewers to know that Marion County is really moving very quickly to begin to repair a lot of our roads in the county, and they're, they're making a great effort to do that. And it's something that we've not necessarily always accomplished in the past, but they're doing a great job now to get that done.
Yeah, appreciate the good work. Anything else?
Well, just, that just sounded wrong. The reason we haven't done primarily is of the economic resources to do the work. It wasn't that Public Works couldn't or wouldn't. Just people are clear. Oh, you're saying they wouldn't? Oh, I take that all back. I just tell what I see, John.
Yeah. Well, we appreciate all the work that you're doing, and, and I know the citizens, when we drive roads, we don't think, okay, this one's a city road, a county road, a state road. But I know, I've heard several comments from people that when they hit the Clackamas Marion County border and they come into Marion County, they go, whoa, your roads are so much better than Clackamas. And I said, there's a lot of things that we're better at than Clackamas. So thank you for what you do. Do we need a motion, or do we already have a motion?
No, we have a vote on this.
All right.
Is it me?
I can't remember.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the public improvement agreement with Roy Hawk Construction LLC for $3,450,729.65 for asphalt concrete resurfacing of various Marion County roads.
Second.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Just to note, these, this was the contractor that actually did that project 20 years ago. Dave? All right. Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All right. That's done.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Chair, my point was they're doing a great job.
Yeah, thank you, John.
Isn't that what I said?
I, I understood what you were saying, John. Okay, so that completes our work for the day. Commissioner, if you want to read the calendar of all the places we're going to be next week, or this week and next week.
Today is Wednesday, April 17th. We're in board session in the Center Hearing Room on the first floor of 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. At 2:30 this afternoon, we have a joint Willamette Workforce Partnership Board and Mid Valley Jobs Council meeting located at the Center for Business Industry at 626 High Street Northeast in Salem in Rooms 101 and 102. Tomorrow, Thursday, April 18th, at 8:00 a.m., we have a City of Salem Marion County meeting at the Sassy Onion at 1244 State Street in Salem.
Could you tell the chair we're still having a meeting here?
Mr. Chair, we're still having a meeting here.
He isn't listening.
He doesn't seem to care. Monday, April 22nd, at 8:30 in the morning, we have Calendar Review located in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor of this building. On April 22nd, Monday, at 9:00 a.m., we have Management Update located in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor of this building. Monday, April 22nd, at 11:00 a.m., we have a BOC CAO meeting and executive session if needed pursuant to ORS 192.660 located in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor of this building. On April 22nd, at 4:00 in the afternoon, we have a Marion County Budget Committee meeting located in the Commissioner's Boardroom on the fifth floor of this building. On April 23rd, Tuesday, at 6:15 in the morning, we have a Public Works Pancake Breakfast benefiting Marion County Employee Food Drive located at 5155 Silverton Road Northeast in Salem. On April 23rd, at 8:30 in the morning, we have a Community Corrections Board located in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor of this building. On Tuesday, April 23rd, at 10:30 in the morning, we have a Marion County Housing Initiative meeting with city planners located in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor of this building. On April 24th, Wednesday, at 9:00 in the morning, we have Board Session located in this room in the first floor of this building. On April 24th, Wednesday, at 3:00 in the afternoon, we have a Census 2020 informational meeting located at the Center 50+ 2615 Portland Road Northeast in Salem. And on April 24th, Wednesday, at 6:00 p.m., we have the Santiam Awards Night located in the Santiam High School Auditorium 265 Evergreen Street in Mill City. All right.
Well, thank you for that. Busy week.
So if you don't mind, just some comments. Yesterday, we took a tour in broad acres of Marion eggs, rather new, very new fertilizer facility. I just got to tell you, I'm more than impressed. It's huge. Cole was talking about automated or computer, everything. They took us into the control room, and I joked about it, but I, I think in 30 seconds, I could have fouled up the entire world. But the mixing, the number of products, the thoughts and design, the cost, the delays, it was pretty illustrative for me, and I think we can learn some things.
I probably would love to get some of that fertilizer if you were mixing it, because it would probably make my grass just go boom!
All nitrogen. Yeah, can't, can't hurt it with that.
Might pollute the, the world, but it would be green grass growing fast.
It's great when you have local businesses that are that competent and successful.
Creative, right?
Creative. Yeah. It was interesting when they were talking about how the building, they designed themselves, right? That wasn't off spec.
On a napkin, he said. Remember, they took their napkin drawing to a, to a engineer?
From their years of work, they knew that they wanted, what do they call them? The chambers that hold the, the different fertilizer on the, on the center of the building instead of on the sides of the buildings.
Service from both sides.
They could service from both sides and make it more efficient. I thought that was just fascinating. And the fact they did it out of all wood, because otherwise the product would corrode the metal. That was really, very creative.
You know, something else I'm always impressed with, people that really know their stuff. For example, Dave, that we met here a little bit ago, and both those fellows, you know, Tom Wimmer, we used to say Weimer, I went to school with his brother, Bob. And Tito, I didn't get his last name, but can you tell me they don't know what's going on instantly?
It was way above my head. When he was describing all of what he was doing, I was like, I couldn't follow.
Did I just hit that red flashy thing a little bit?
Well, there was a, on that one thing right next to me, there was this warning thing with red going off, and I almost said, is something going on here? And it's like, okay. It's like, what am I?
But they're able to take how many ingredients? 16 different bins?
20, I thought you said 22.
Okay. And then make the different percentages to make different mix for different orders all by computer.
Over 200 different products, you said?
And, and the, the gauging, they talked about a gravity-fed diminishing weight to calculate volume. How you do that?
Well.
And even putting the two different programs together, right?
Oh, sure.
They bought that one operation out of Iowa, and they had another operation. They had to get the two different computer systems to talk to each other, and you talked about what a headache that was.
There was one other that I don't know if you caught. Everything comes in by train, but there's no good ability to get it out. So it's all going out by truck, and that is impacting to that Donald Corter that we talk about, and even, you know, Butteville Road and Woodburn and issues we've had, so.
And he said he used to get six loads a day through Portland. Now it's only three because of the congestion. How much does that cost in a business?
Takes twice as many trucks to do the same thing.
It seems super efficient how those train cars came in, and then they just opened up the bottom, and it fell onto the conveyor belt. Really say out of some amazing number, like tons and tons of material, they would only be off by 20 pounds on their scales. I mean, that's astonishing. So it, it is sort of, it'd be nice if there was a.
And the conveyor belt, the conveyor belt was the scale. Remember, he said that it actually, as it's moving, it weighs it.
So it would be nice if they could, if there was a system where they could get it out on rail as well, you know? It seems kind of a shame that.
There ought to be a way.
Yeah.
I went from there to the outlet store and bought some new workout clothes at the Nike Outlet Store.
I wanted to get some new stuff.
Some new stuff? Probably, you would go the other way to Cabela's.
I just haven't worn out my workout stuff that I've already had. It's holding up pretty well.
The three of us, he's the one that's the most natural over there.
Yeah.
He was the one wearing boots and jeans and a jacket.
Yeah.
I showed up in a suit. That was a mistake.
Yeah, I, I had my truck, too. It felt good driving my truck up there. Yeah.
And just because I'm thinking of it, I don't know if you caught it now, you know, you got the striping, and now it's the reflective things. If you could master that, or I'm kind of thinking those lines that you kind of squiggled, you might be able to kind of feather them a bit where it isn't so noticeable with the reflectors.
With the reflectors. That stuff's really expensive. I don't think they'll let me put that down.
Well, you put a little glue and slap it on. It's just not a big deal.
Yeah.
No?
Oh, so what do we got today? Oh, yeah, that's a, it's.
I only have a service award at Juvenile, I believe.
You're going to do a great job.
Then I leave tomorrow for Medford for, for timber, ONC Counties. Don't know of anything brand new going on. We'll get an update on some litigation. The first one, actually, we lost. It was Murphy Lumber, perhaps you've heard of them. They had a suit similar to ours, but ours is based on the authority of, of the president to take away from ONC lands. The Murphy lumber's issue was having to do with the availability and the guarantee of timber itself, so it's a little bit different issue, but that still isn't a good sign. However, I'm hopeful it will still prevail. And a little, to make the issue for people who don't know, President Obama literally just by a stroke of a pen took some 40,000 acres of ONC land and made it a wilderness area. Was that, I think that was what it was essentially. And, you know, wilderness is fine, but you can't take somebody else's property and rights and decide to use it elsewhere. So.
So, and I'm going to go tomorrow morning to Hope and Yamhill Ag Breakfast, Sedcor's Ag Breakfast they do over there. So I've, I've never been to their, their ag breakfast, so I thought I'd do that. And then in the afternoon, I got to go, I'm going to actually meet with a couple, a senator and a representative on Senate Bill 4, or, yeah, Senate Bill 451 and House Bill 2020 and on Covanta. And then on Friday, I'm doing that again with a couple of them. Are you going to the Good Friday Prayer Breakfast?
I'll be in Medford.
Oh, that's right. Are you going to that?
I'm going to.
Okay. Yeah.
You can say one for me if that's what you're thinking. It wouldn't hurt you any.